It feels far away. All right, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting of the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission Wednesday, December 14th, to order at 6:36 PM. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the Recording Secretary please call the roll?
Chair.
Present.
Vice Chair Maharo is absent this evening. As well as Commissioner Duvert.
Present.
And Madam Chair, we do have a quorum with that.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on cable channel three and our online platforms. To prevent any overlaps in comments, each commissioner will be called upon to speak, and that will bring us to our first item, which is public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card that is available on the back table. Once completed, kindly submit the card to the Recording Secretary. Speakers will be called to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Have we received any public comments?
No, Madam Chair, not at this time.
All right. That will then take us to the second item, which is approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the May 11th, 2022, and September 14th, 2022, HPCRC meetings. Please correct me in order. Do I call for a motion and then open for discussion?
It would be the reverse order.
Okay. So are there any comments on the minutes? If you see a correction, if Jennifer sees a correction, please.
Madam Chair, just one small correction. It's the minutes of September 14th, item number eight, just the spelling of my last name, it ends in a D, just not an N. That one jumped out at me.
That's a good correction to catch. All right, so if I could have a motion made to approve the minutes with that correction?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Raina. In a second. If we could have a roll call vote?
Chair Lubish?
Aye. So this takes us to the Historic Resources Survey update.
There we go. Thank you so much, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Originally, staff for this item had planned for ARG, Architectural Resource Group, to provide this update, but they had scheduling conflicts, so we will do our best in their place. So the purpose of this item this evening, since the last update provided to the commission was in September, we are at the end of the year, and staff thought it would be appropriate to provide the commission an update on where the project is at. The next couple of slides will outline the work that has been done, up to date, followed by next steps, and what's to come in the upcoming year. Okay, so to start off, the project began in April of this year. That's when kickoff occurred, as well as commencement of the work by, again, ARG, the city's consultant retained to work on the project. In May, the city launched a dedicated webpage for the project on the city's website, and the webpage includes a summary of the project, an FAQ, and also the project timeline, as well as methods for the community to provide comments on the project as the project goes from beginning to development to the compilation of all the data that is collected throughout the project process. Then, also in May, a public comment form as part of the community outreach efforts, a public comment form was developed for the community and stakeholders to share information about individual properties, as well as neighborhoods and other resources that ARG should look at in a little bit more detail as they are going through their research and their reconnaissance survey. And the comments form is available in English, Spanish, and Chinese, and this is in PDF. On the webpage, it's also available, if the public needs hard copies, hard copies are available as well. And so the public is welcome to come to City Hall or to reach out to city staff either through email or the phone. And even if not on the public comment form, any member of the public is welcome to just provide any write-up or just to mention any address or property that they think ARG should pay a little bit more attention to. Then in July of this year was the first in-person community meeting that was held here in the city council chambers to introduce the project to the community and to provide informations on ways to participate and to provide comments to city staff and to ARG. Then, in the summer of this year, ARG compiled and reviewed existing documentations related to the evaluation of historic and cultural resources in San Gabriel, including reviewing the previous surveys that were conducted, in particular for the specific plan areas along Valley Boulevard within the valley area on the southern side of the city, as well as the Mission District, at the west and northwest areas of the city, as well as reviewing existing Millsak contracts, as well as other documentation for properties listed in the National Register of Historic Places. Then in September of this year, ARG conducted their reconnaissance survey, which included driving through, they indicated all the streets in the city, so all the streets in the city within the city's limit, taking notes on their drives, on the architectural trends and development patterns, individual buildings, concentrations of properties, and other types of built resources, again, within the city's limits. And then in October of this year, to the present time, this is following their research and their reconnaissance, they are currently conducting focused research on individual buildings, districts, and other potential resources, finalizing their research and preparing the draft property list to submit to the city for review, which was anticipated to be completed, we were hoping, by the time of this meeting. We're about a week or two, a little bit delayed on that timeline, but the property list should be completed by the end of the month. And so that is something that both ARG and staff is excited, will be available, it will be posted on, again, the dedicated webpage, it will be emailed to stakeholders, the commission, and just anybody who's interested in seeing the list, but it will be available for public review and comments. And so here we are at the end of the year in December, and the draft, as mentioned, the draft property list is anticipated to be completed for review, and is to include a roster of individual properties, historic districts, nonparcial resources that appear to be eligible for state, federal, and local designation. And then in the upcoming year, in January, after the middle of the draft property list, but prior to ARG conducting a more intensive survey of, again, any properties that they should revisit to pay more attention to, ARG will conduct a targeted outreach with the community members and stakeholders, and this outreach will be conducted by phone and/or telephone, using the lists of interested parties that was provided to ARG by the city during the Historic Context Statement project, that had shown to be an effective and a successful way of having those direct conversations with members of the communities that are a little bit more familiar with the city, as well as providing that network and recommendations of anybody else that may also have interests in commenting or participating in the project. And so following the draft property lists come spring of next year, once it has been reviewed, refined, and finalized, ARG will return to the field and document each eligible resource and nonparcial resource in that more intensive level survey. And then all the findings from that survey will be compiled into a comprehensive Historic Research Survey report to be presented to the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission, as well as to the city council. So there will be a few meetings in the upcoming year, as the commission and the city council and the community helps to refine that list and to define the resources. And this concludes staff's update on the project.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Raina, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no questions or comments at this time.
Commissioner Weeks, any questions or comments?
No.
I have just a few. In terms of, let's see, I'm looking to see if I'm in the right part of the timeline. So end of month, the draft property list should be compiled. About how much time is there for comment from the public and stakeholders?
At this time, it is anticipated for about a month.
Okay. I wanted to suggest that perhaps some outreach be done to the San Gabriel Historical Association. They are back now out of COVID and holding somewhat regular meetings, but it might be a good idea to share the list with them for a meeting with their membership. It might be a nice concentrated way to engage a group that has a lot of knowledge about the properties and developments in the city. And then my other question, I realize that the purpose of this is overwhelmingly architectural and the built environment, but I do just want to speak to the cultural landscapes, and in this case, I'm thinking very particularly of the Barrio, so-named areas. And although we did call them out in the Historic Context Statement, just driving that area to me is one where the architecture may not be distinguished, but it certainly distinctly tells the story of the community there. And so, I realize, as they're pulling the list together, they may well be beyond that, but it is, I think, an area that we should keep our eye on. If there aren't further questions from my colleagues, it's time for public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Madam Chair, not at this time.
All right, so it is 6:50 PM, and the time for public comment on this item is now closed. Any last comments before we move on? All right, so that brings us to item four, a presentation of La Laguna de San Gabriel, which is my pony to ride. So my intention in putting this presentation together, and I'm happy to speak to some of the history and the stories that went into the process of designating La Laguna de San Gabriel, or Monster Park, or Dinosaur Park, as it's more familiarly known. Oh, it is, okay. Do you have my mic on? But I really wanted to approach this from what I think is valuable to learn as commissioners about the process by which we began to organize around saving and protecting La Laguna de San Gabriel. So this is an overview picture from opening day back in May 1965. It's a really wonderful, picture's a bit cropped here because you can actually get a sense of the whole context of the playground, so you can see how beyond the lighthouse and mini the whale, it extends over to McKinley Elementary School. And it really speaks to sort of the textbook application of planning principles of this period of time, where you tried to pair active areas, recreational areas, with passive recreational areas, and really the concept that athletic fields might be housed over at the elementary school, but the playground was going to be at the adjoining park. And we have a lot of anecdotal stories from former staff and from the artist's family of the children walking through the construction site of the playground on their way, leaving McKinley Elementary School to head back home in the village. So it's really a fantastic example of really the principles in playground design, but also in city planning of the time period. Additionally, this picture itself is really a fun one, because as we began organizing, one of the things that we lacked were historic photos. We had photos that the artist had taken, and we had asked the city if they had any, and they said no. And then one day, we were down, it was then the Parkson Rec Building, now Community Services, and walked past one of their display boards, and they had all of these amazing photos hanging in the display, and we said, where did you get these photos? And so oftentimes, a lot of the resources that we would like to have are actually there, and we learned quite a bit. Friends of La Laguna is the nonprofit that formed in response to a plan to renovate Vincent Lugo Park, which we learned was a very confusing term for our community, translated into Vietnamese, Cantonese Mandarin. It often meant that you were going to make things look new again, rather than you were going to demolish and build something new. And as we did outreach to the community, we learned words matter, and when we explained, no, it's going to go away, people said, oh, no, we don't want it to go away. But this is the Grapevine newsletter that really, at the 11th hour, was announcing the contracts to demolish La Laguna de San Gabriel, and was the impetus for community engagement and organization, although it had been ongoing for about two years. The Parkson Rec Commission had had the project before them, and different groups had come to speak against the demolition of the playground. But it was a combination of funding from the rivers and mountains, conservancy, Measure A funding, a master plan for improvements, but most importantly, the Playground Safety Code. And a 1994 trigger in that code made the playground woefully out of compliance, which it still is today. It does not comply to modern safety standards. But I think for community groups, it was something that made them feel that there was no solution. If it's legally out of compliance, then there's nothing that you can do. And one of the things that we did as an organization, when Michael Ng was our Assembly Member, he used to have a "there ought to be a law" contest. So we proposed a law that would cross-list a reference to the Historic Building Code in the Playground Safety Code, so that cities that had unique play structures would be able to find a path, possibly, to preserving them. And when we're sort of looking at images and other interesting historic artifacts, I wanted to point out that the Civic Auditorium had not yet had its name changed, so this was before it became the Mission Playhouse once again. So it was really a result of significant community engagement. That is my now 20-year-old standing next to my husband presenting at the last city council meeting before Christmas, a gift-wrapped pack of petitions that we had gone out and collected in the community. We worked through PTAs, AYSO, all of the community organizations that we were involved with. My husband is a professor at PCC, and so we organized students there, particularly students who were multilingual or bilingual. So we were able to walk with a group of students, go to a door, and when they answered and said, we don't speak English, we said, that's okay, we've got Cantonese Mandarin, Spanish right here with us. And we were able to communicate with the community. We worked with the Parkson Recreation Commission, and as we researched the artist, we were able to bring that information and present it at the Parkson Recreation Commission meetings. And it was really a fascinating dive, and kind of gets back to a lot of the passion that I have around cultural landscapes, because when we started talking with the city, their answer was, we don't really know who built it. They knew which director had been overseeing the department at the time, but by happenstance, we had been at the playground and met an elderly couple who were photographing the creatures, and they, we introduced ourselves, and they said, well, you know, my father, an artist, created this, and the park he created in Las Vegas has just been destroyed, so we came here to see if this one was still existing. And only because of that chance meeting did we have a name that we could then chase down. So a lot of our activity involved driving to Las Vegas and up to Redding to get oral histories from the sons that were still alive and who had helped build the playground, and then beginning to cross-reference the information that they gave us. There are three playgrounds by Benjamin Dominguez that still survive in the United States. They're all in California. So we have what is referred to as the best, last, and only. It is the best example of his work. It is the last playground that he completed with his own hands, and it is the only playground that is unmodified and intact from the time that he constructed it. When we did our oral histories, we went back to Las Vegas and interviewed members of the Junior League who had hired him, and when we spoke with them, the recurring theme of, we didn't know his name, he was just the Mexican, came up. And again, this, I think, is a good cautionary tale for us as we think about being inclusive. It is often very, very hard for underrepresented populations to rise through professional organizations that might preserve their name and their works. In the 1960s, so much of this was done sort of through a friend knows a friend. The formal processes were not as clear as they might be considered today, and so those names were lost. And being cognizant of the challenges different populations have had, participating or getting commissions, I think, is very important. So our action plan was one that relied very heavily on broader preservation organizations. And we were very fortunate that my son's godmother was Dr. Anthea Hartig. So in our panic, she was the first person that we called. At that time, she was the Regional Director of the Western Office for the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and she immediately said, you need to read Preservation Brief 36, which is a brief that covers cultural landscapes, and very importantly, designed cultural landscapes, which became the argument for the playground, that this is not a structure, it is a landscape, because it is a playground, but it's one that was designed intentionally by an artist. We also knew that we needed to use the Historic Building Code if we were going to try to protect La Laguna and keep it intact, so it became a crash course in the Historic Building Code, which we could only apply if it was deemed a historic, and I'm going to use the word site, but a historic site. And so placing La Laguna Playground on the State Register of Historic Places became a priority. We received good training from the National Trust for Historic Preservation and from the LA Conservancy, most importantly, their Modern Committee. MODCOM, as they're referred to, holds regular meetings, and we went at the beginning sort of as a public comment, really, just to say, is this valuable? One of the challenges in preservation is discerning what is sentimental and what is actually historic. And it was such a relief to put up a picture of the playground and have the committee go crazy, because we finally felt like, okay, we have outside affirmation that this is important. And they were also terrifically helpful in directing us to people and resources and connecting us with other groups that helped us really learn how to navigate preservation. Both Aloi and I are academic historians by training and got to make a very steep sprint up the curve of public history. So the process for saving the playground was an MOU with the city, and at that time, it was suggested that it would take about $60,000 to be able to restore or save the playground. And Friends of La Laguna was comprised of three families who had children at the same elementary school, and $60,000 seemed insurmountable. We had a meeting where we asked, would we be willing to take out another mortgage on our houses? What would we do to save this? How far were we willing to go? And then, having made a bit of news, literally getting the attention of media, we're contacted by the Annenberg Foundation, which we call our Miracle Grant. And we got a phone call from Allison Gister saying, how can philanthropy help? And we cried for, I don't know, maybe a half hour before we said, if you could just give us $60,000, that would be great. So the initial Annenberg Miracle Grant gave us the funding we needed to complete a Historic Structures Report, which became the manual for our state register, our nomination to the state register, which was also helped by a grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Once we had, for lack of a better word, landmarked the playground, we then applied to the California Cultural and Historical Endowment in their competitive grant cycle. We went two rounds and were successful in both of those grant applications, which funded the construction documents for the entire project, but also restoration of the entry dock, which is that little wooden structure. And in that case, we restored it back to its original state, meaning that the metal slide that was added to the front was taken off, which was a nice thing to be able to do, because the metal slide was always a safety hazard. You get stories of people really loving the dinosaurs and really hating the burns they get from the metal slides at the playground. The trick in any kind of playground work is that you cannot repair, you must restore. Repairs or replacement would, in fact, trigger compliance with the Playground Safety Code. So we've been very careful in looking at the treatments that were suggested in the Historic Structures Report and in the construction documents to focus on restoration of the pieces. You can find examples across the nation of other quirky or unique playground pieces that have gone through similar challenges. At Golden Gate Park, there is a set of historic swings, and when you look at the major renovation that was done at the park there, there's a little gray circle, which is where the swing set is, that they just left out of the plans, so was not part of the renovation of the park. We've been able to repair and/or restore other pieces with funding from Supervisor Barker, now, most recently, from Assembly Member Fong, from the PCC Foundation, and a whole host of private companies and individuals that have donated to the restoration. So from that original estimate that it was going to be $60,000, we are now well over $800,000 in terms of the work that we've put into the playground, and that's not including this most recent donation from Assembly Member Fong, which will put us over the million-dollar mark for restoration. And it's all been leveraged. Anytime we get funds, we try to roll it into another grant where we might be able to get more for the donation that we've received. So in terms of lessons for our commission, I think it's really important to understand that on the city side, process was followed. There was a master plan that was drawn up, there were all sorts of public hearings and discussions, notifications were sent to residents within 300 feet of the project, which admittedly at Vincent Lugo Park is a bit of a challenge, because you have the Alhambra Wash that eats into that 300 feet, you have a lot of park space. We spent a lot of time arguing with the city about where they drew that dot to start the 300 feet, because it limited the number of people who could be notified. So in our success in saving the playground, we did argue quite a lot with how the process was implemented, although acknowledging that process was followed. Per sequa, there was an evaluation of the historic resources. It was actually done by Martin Wile, who was the preservation consultant at the time. Martin Wile has since passed away. We have an award here in the city named for him, the Martin E. Wile Preservation Award. He was the founder of MODCOM, ironically, and wonderfully instrumental once we got underway because of his skill in color matching. At La Laguna Playground, it's one of the earliest examples of colored concrete that you can find, and being able to figure out which pigments Benjamin Dominguez had used is always a challenge, and Martin Wile helped us initially with some of that. And we eventually got to a point where we could tease him, because as we're hearing about our own survey that's being done, you'll about our own survey that's being done, you'll, you'll hear the phrase, a windshield survey, where people are driving by and looking at the windshield. And we asked Martin Wile, when he drove through the parking lot down at Vincent Lugo, did he take a sip of coffee and miss the playground in the back and, and say that there was nothing significant there? And, and he was a good sport and said, yes, that's, that's probably how it went. I think, again, in things that we need to be aware of, community groups organized for two years before the three families came together and formed the Friends of La Laguna. My husband and I have always felt very fortunate for our training as historians because we think it helped us navigate how to go about saving La Laguna. But we also had terrific help from the broader preservation community, which is an invaluable resource. The number of groups that came to our assistance who offered insights, who came to meetings and spoke on our behalf was invaluable. The second point in the big yet is that information about the artist and his context were lacking. And again, when you go back and you read, even in some of the minutes from the Parks and Rec Commission, it says the Mexican artist. It doesn't name him. In some of the fun lore around our efforts, our next door neighbor was Helen Achilles, who was the mayor of San Gabriel at one point. When she, she passed, she left just her daughter, and when her daughter passed, there was no family. So the county just backed a dumpster up to the house and started throwing things away. And at night, there'd be all of these papers that had blown into our yard. And so one night, we were picking them up and we picked up the minutes when Benjamin Dominguez was introduced to the Parks and Rec Commission as a potential artist and it had his original drawing of what he wanted to do inside. So we've often said that we think that Benjamin Dominguez is sort of steering us from, from the beyond. And then there was also a real disconnect between community staff and council. It was a place that was really, truly important to the community and people tried to find ways to speak to it. And there was a falling back largely on concerns about liability with the Playground Safety Code and cost. And I think that one of the great successes in the advocacy for La Laguna was the public private collaboration of a nonprofit of community members coming in and finding a way to work with staff and with city council to get to a point where we all agree that this is an incredibly valuable community resource. We have a sign down at La Laguna Playground that indicates that it is a non-compliant playground and that additional supervision is needed. In playground speak, it is a playground where self-selecting play is, is the, the mode, meaning that if a child isn't strong enough to pull themselves up on something, they won't be able to get up on something. And the other more intact playground that did do modifications reports that all of their injuries at the playground come because of the modifications. So at Garden Grove, they put stairs on a lot of the sculptures, which puts younger children on top of things where they should not be. So it was just a matter of finding a creative solution. And I think that here was a really wonderful example of how the community, city staff and council can work together. So there you have my presentation. And if there are any questions or comments, I'm happy to answer them. Aloy had wanted to be here, but there was a board meeting for PCC. We thought it would be fun to tag team the two of us. He's a much more exciting storyteller and is legendary at the Historical Association for his accountings. Yeah, please.
Madam Chair, thank you for that beautiful presentation. That was a fantastic story and you said it, you gave it so well. I just had a question about the Friends Group and maybe the answer can help inform others that are listening. How formalized was the Friends Group? Was this actually like a 501(c)(3) nonprofit? Can you speak to that for just a bit?
So initially, we were just three households making phone calls and trying to get as many people to call in as we could. One of our members is John Harrington, who's now on the city council and is a lawyer. And so he was very quick in saying we needed to formalize as a 501(c)(3). So we became aware of the proposed demolition of La Laguna in October. We had our 501(c)(3) status by December. So about the same time that we were bringing petitions in, we were a 501(c)(3), which does open a huge number of possibilities. It made it much easier to apply for grants, to receive funds, and to be able to advocate in that, that respect. Any other questions?
No, no questions. I really enjoyed the story though. There's a lot.
All right. Well, then that takes us to public comment. Are there any public comments on this item?
No, Madam Chair, there's no public comments at this time.
All right. So it is now 7:11 and the time for public comment on this item is closed. If there are no other comments, that will take us to the fifth item on our agenda, the case study of the Covina Bowl. And this will be presented by Jennifer Mermilliod.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Jen Mermilliod, City Architectural Historian. And tonight, we do have another presentation. It's a case study, like the last, as an educational session, and hopefully a delightful, in-depth look at the good work being done in the Historic Preservation Community, more good work being done right here in San Gabriel Valley. It's been my great good fortune to be the Architectural Historian of Record for the Covina Bowl project for the last four years. And it's my pleasure to present the Covina Bowl to you tonight. This is the first and one of the most lavish bowling centers ever created. It opened in 1956 and its exuberant design that you can see here rested the attention of the motoring public. And it provided an exotic escape for beckoned bowlers and families from far and wide. Development of this roadside masterpiece in the mid-1950s by the Brudico Brothers that contributed to the post-World War II suburbanization of Covina and the region. And this photo in particular seems to capture what's really what we know to be, like a decades-long sweeping transition in, in a single moment in time. In the distance on the left, you can see a orange grove and it's sort of fading like it would be very soon. And in the foreground, we have five fabulous machines who are clustered in front of this structural wonder that is the Covina Bowl, all noses pointing toward the monumental neon sign here, as they're drawn, drawn right off the freeway by that irresistible Googie The Covina Bowl boldly represents the pioneering work of Powers Daily and De Rosa. These are masters in the field in their stunning Googie-style multipurpose bowling centers that they perfected. This was touted, the Covina Bowl, as the largest center of its kind in the United States, and it became a prototype, really, for dozens more in auto-centric suburban settings across the country. And Powers Daily and De Rosa themselves created about 50 more in just California alone by 1962. The character-defining features included the soaring A-frame roof, of course. You can see there is actually physically interconnected with that folded plate canopy, and the 60-foot monumental neon sign, reverse triangular sign is what that's called. The aluminum-framed storefront, the triangular baffles on the facade, the bouquet canyon rock walls. Also, there's exposed cantilevered awnings that aren't visible in this picture. And that pyramid-like roof, of course, and, and the interior motif that you can see in the bottom, that introduced an Egyptian element, but it really is Polynesian influence in the wake of World War II here that's embodied in the soaring roof line and those sharp angular lines and those repeated shapes. And of course, the rock walls as well. The colorful lavish interior featured a cocktail lounge, a banquet room, a diner, more rock walls, a green tarozzo concourse, and fanciful ceilings. Never before really had a bowling alley offered so much to so many. And there are business lunches held here, birthday parties, league play, club meetings and special events, and much, much more were held at the Covina Bowl. And this family-friendly prototype also expanded bowling culture to women in the mid-century with bowling lessons, billiards instruction, a quality diner that they could trust, a children's nursery, nursery, and very soon, a beauty shop. So it's little wonder that the extravagant, extravagant Covina Bowl was a hub, really, of regional bowling culture and also a spot for family recreation for more than 60 years. Sadly, these are the last photos taken just days before this treasured place closed its doors in March 2017. The community's reaction, as you can imagine, ranged from nostalgic sadness to horrified disbelief and settled squarely in determination. The previous year, the L.A. Conservancy had been successful in securing a determination of eligibility from the L.A. Conservancy, excuse me, from the, for the National Register, and now declared the Covina Bowl one of the most endangered places in the region. The Friends of the Covina Bowl brought together preservation professionals, bowling enthusiasts, mid-century history buffs, Covina Bowl patrons, and local residents. Several potential projects for the site were, were proposed, but they all included full demolition. And of course, those were roundly rejected. With the bowling lanes already removed and a contractual non-compete in place, ultimately the idea was to restore and rehabilitate for commercial and professional use, the large front mass of the bowling area without the lanes. And the front mass is where all the character-defining features were concentrated, and then surround that with a new residential community. But this was day one. I always say that the most endangered historic building is the vacant one. And the Covina Bowl had sat vacant for just two years. But what a change. It was difficult to keep people out of the building. The building was in terrible shape inside and out. Over several visits, we explored the entire property, discovering the damage, the dirty, the neglected, the, the altered. As I said, there were intruders practically on a daily basis, getting in or sleeping atop the folded plate canopy in the shelter of the A-frame and behind the rock courtyard wall here. And you can see a hammock in the top right picture. Fires were set. Copper was stripped clean, fixtures, appliances, glass were taken or broken, of course graffiti debris, drug paraphernalia, and human and rodent filth were just everywhere. And to say the bowling lanes had been removed is quite the understatement. They had been completely eradicated, leaving this once really lively and loud space eerily silent, like a moonscape. So my role on the project was multifaceted. I completed the Cultural Resources Technical Study, which included a Secretary of the Interior's assessment and analysis that identified and analyzed potential project impacts under SEQA. Rehabilitation plan followed, I wrote that, and then that was turned into a full preservation plan to guide the project and future work. And eventually, I wrote specifications to directly describe and predict the specialty means and methods that would go into actually performing the work. Because I was brought in so early in the project, it was really the feasibility analysis phase I was brought in. I was really able to join the design team and help shape the conceptual design and the project objectives. So to best inform the project and complete the study, I had to know as much as I could about the Covina Bowl and its design through research, physical investigation, and community outreach. I did do selective additional new research, but mostly I gathered from a treasure trove of previously done work. There's works, writings, photography about the Covina Bowl by many, many colleagues and enthusiasts. And this really rounded out my knowledge of mid-century Googie bowling centers and, and bowling culture. And also contextualized the Covina Bowl, you know, within its setting in Covina as well as the region. So I really was very appreciative of working with my colleagues, like academics in the field, very helpful to me when I get to this stage. As I said, we'd crawled all over every inch of this building, but it wasn't quite enough. There were still aspects of the building and its construction methods, its systems that we couldn't see or reach. And so using cutting-edge LiDAR technology, we completed 3D scans of the building, the entire building, to help us look more deeply into the structure. And through Cloud Point and vector files, we could accurately map, model, draw, and create 3D images and features of different features and sections. That was incredibly helpful technology. Our outreach approach was also multifaceted and both independent and in partnership with the City of Covina, which was incredibly supportive. The city was very much behind this project and supportive every step of the way. We had a series of gatherings to connect with the community, including multi-open-house events and tours at the Covina Bowl, more formal community meeting that we held at the local senior center, and additional meetings with individuals and consultation with the L.A. Conservancy. And we, and this was conducted probably over a period of about two years. These were critical to the success of the project and provided opportunities to exchange information, concerns, and ideas. And as you saw in the last presentation, robust community engagement is quite critical to the process. After one community meeting, Mike Messing there on the left, he's a descendant of one of the Brudico Brothers, and he entrusted us with that set. He donated that original set of construction plans, had handwritten notes. He donated that to the project. So I was able to have those safely scanned. And they really clarified so many details that were mysteries to us. And so those are, those are scanned and, and also provided to the city. Elton Chatfield there on the right, longtime president of the local Kiwanis Club. The Kiwanis held weekly meetings there at the Covina Bowl and specialty events, as did many, many other fraternal and social organizations. And he met with me for a special chat, helped me understand really the importance of all the other amenities besides bowling and how important that was to the community and to the region. Community engagement also brought surprising discoveries and greater insight. On one of the tours, our group was sort of lamenting the removal of the original mosaic tile bulkhead that you can see there on the left. And one of the community members said, you know, it's, I bet it's still under there. And we had this epiphany moment and literally pried off the wood right there and we found the original bulkhead together. The north awning on the right, that's over that, that north side entrance to the green tarozzo concourse. And that was in the path of demolition. We really, really wanted to relocate it, but it was far easier said than done. And I didn't want to overpromise. I, I didn't feel as confident that we could do it. There was one community member in particular for whom this was a very, very special feature, and he was especially interested. And so every time I, I was trying to hedge and not overpromise, he would press and encourage, and we sort of used the same terms like hope and try, but we said them very differently. So, so that encounter with the community member really stuck with me the entire project. And in the final design, the Covina Bowl project removed the rear west portion of the building. That, that had housed the lanes, which you saw were completely gone and couldn't be brought back or even have the place used for bowling alley. We removed the, a north addition, an inappropriate addition on the north, and a large south addition. And we retained almost all the original front portion, which was still a huge mass, and repaired, restored, or preserved the most significant character-defining features, materials, and spaces. In order to make restoring the Covina Bowl even possible, we had to be able to reconstruct, or excuse me, construct enough residential units and around it. And we soon realized that we needed more space for it and for it to all pencil out. So luckily, we were, we were able to acquire two additional parcels, adjacent parcels during the conceptual phase, and we were able to build 132 units around the Covina Bowl. For the new residential units, per the Secretary of the Interior's standards, I conveyed the need to use historic reference and inspiration in the new residential community to build cohesion without competition and do that in a way that allowed the Covina Bowl to, to continue to stand out in prominent compatibility. I worked closely with the project architectural team, WHA, and architect Tom Morales. He really expertly created what I could only express through small subtle ways. You can see on the bottom left there, that's one of the new buildings in the community. And he was able to pull in small elements, materials, colors, landscaping, lighting, signage. And these were all methods to make the whole cohesive site development and, and also still have the Covina Bowl really stand out. In the final analysis, because the bowling center property type was an integral part of its eligibility, the removal of the very nondescript, you know, back half of it, that rear mass, even though the lanes were gone and we couldn't create lanes again or even operate as a bowling alley, that was still, though, it being significant as a bowling type, that, under the Secretary of the Interior's analysis, we still had a significant impact. type, that, under the Secretary of the Interior's analysis, we still had a significant impact. And so, we required overrides in order to have the project approved by City Council as part of the EIR process. And we did get that in March 2021, of course, at a virtual meeting, and that was four years after the Covina Bowl closed. Lucky me, I was able to stay on the project to manage the portion of construction under the preservation plan, which ironically started with demolition. So this next photo is not for the preservation squeamish. Yeah, so this was tough. A tough but necessary step that left gaping holes in the building. This is the rough demolition area. The lanes on the top left there is the area where we're at, and we're cutting off the south end in the other two pictures. And at the same time, salvage demolition was actually happening on the other side, so we're looking at the south here, from the south pretty much. And so, on the north, remember the north awning? Well, we did find a way to save it and relocate it, though it really was a painstaking task to dismantle the rock wall and that column there in order to salvage and free the awning. But we got the hang of it, and we made progress while rough demo was happening, full steam ahead behind that wall. And we finally were left with a little naked column of mortar there and able to take the awning off. So we peeled away also the concourse and that north awning as part of a precise demolition zone. The architect really, I thought this was brilliant, had identified a rough demolition zone and a precise zone, and that was really helpful once we got to this stage because we were prepared for it, so the folks on the ground could accommodate it. And that really helped us to have a more careful approach right here, a more deliberate, slower approach. And the Purple Sea Channel that I have circled on the photo, that was part of the north awning, and like the folded plate canopy in the front, it was physically integrated structurally with the building. The shadow line on the wall shows the angle of its tilt as it emerged from the building over the north entry, so that's where that north awning was. So throughout the course of the project, I did have to defend the north awning over and over against dire predictions and unsolicited advice from many different people involved in the project. Just about everyone who came onto the project site and looked at it said something like, "You can't save that. That thing is going to twist and warp when we cut it off, and we'll have to rebuild it anyway. The stucco is going to all crack and fall out, and we'll have to rebuild it anyway. We have no room to store that enormous 30-foot thing on a construction site. We should just rebuild it." You know, it would be cheaper and easier just to rebuild it. So to all this and more, I responded with some version of, "I know, but we're going to save it anyway. Maybe, but I have a plan if that happens, don't worry, and it's going to be fine." So the north awning was moved a torturous total of five times in 15 months from the path of demolition and construction, path of progress, making its way around the construction site, even in the rain, and it was even stored inside the building for a while. And I really, really hoped I was right. And one day, it was back in the air, soaring up and out from the north side of the building, where it always was, just feet from where it was originally. And it was totally worth it. It didn't warp or twist, the stucco didn't all fall out. We prioritized the retention of this feature and the preservation of these original materials over replacement. And that was under the Secretary of the Interior's standards. It wouldn't have been nearly so satisfying if we had rebuilt it, but it is a real tribute to the developer for supporting me and historic preservation in this effort. It absolutely would have been cheaper and easier to rebuild it. So this is the area of the interior at the main entry when we very first saw it, and the folded plate canopy framed in purple there, those purple steel beams continues from the exterior. That's that integrated structural approach I was talking about. But a dropped ceiling had been installed above that in the early years, blocking the cave ceiling and the light from the clear story. It was found to be too bright for the bowlers. And the windows themselves had been boarded, of course, when the Covina Bowl closed. So all we could really, we couldn't really see much of the original design, but once we did the asbestos abatement, all of that potential, you know, came back. And so, we saw that we had to do something to restore this. So we have this sweeping A-frame roof, and the integrity of the metal lath that was left was quite compromised. So in this case, unlike the north canopy, we absolutely could not restore this material. It simply wouldn't have the integrity it once did. So the metal lath had to come down as well, and that was replaced in kind. The remaining areas there down below, those were quite Swiss cheese, where the can lights and speakers and vents, et cetera, had been removed. And then, we removed the boards on the side windows and blocking this view of the A-frame canopy and windows, the clear story windows, and the light just poured in, and we knew we just had to return it to its original design. So here's a photo still from the side that shows you what we were able to accomplish. And I wasn't able to get one from the other side because now we have the west wall built there, but you really do need to see it in person to get the full impact of this sweeping cave ceiling. It's magnificent. And this is a photo of the diner in August 2013, and with its gleaming counter and shiny aluminum appliances and row of cantilevered stools. But this is how we found it and what we inherited as part of the project. The counters were marred and filthy, appliances were broken, dirty, partially removed. The Torso footstools, you can see on the left there, was completely cracked, totally unstable and unable to be repaired. We had absolutely no confidence at all in that support structure. And when we removed some of the bases, we saw actually, in fact, that they were nearly rotted through. So we had to demolish and re-pore matching Torso, and we re-engineered the integral pedestal structural system, and that required the removal, actually, of the entire front counter. So all that, all the cleaning, the repair, the restoration of the counters, the appliances, all of that occurred onsite, inside the building, so that was not taken away to another site. It could have been, but we had the space to accommodate the work there. It definitely took the expertise, the entire project took the expertise of a top-notch general contractor. And we also had specialty subcontractors come in, preservation specialists, and you can see the arsenal of products that we used there just for restoring the diner, materials and features. So it took a lot of specialty products and methods, more especially methods with fairly standard products, I would say. The cubbies of the service side of the counter were worn and dirty and damaged as much as was cleaned as was possible. So the damaged areas were patched and repaired, not, the entire thing was not replaced, and we did this with a replacement laminate that was faux painted by hand to match the highly varied wood grain texture in the laminate. I mean, there's no two spaces that are alike, so that was all hand-done. The photo on the bottom right is showing you a restored section, and not all of that was removed. So if you can't tell where patching was done, you really honestly can't tell in person either. They did an amazing job. And the diner is once again gleaming and ready for service. All this effort was done with the intent to give this space the greatest possible chance to be reused as a diner again, and a tenant or owner is actively being sought right now. Uncovering the main entry, we could really see the smoke damage and the wear, plus the boards that had been used to board up the storefront, they were screwed right into the aluminum framing, leaving holes and scars pretty much everywhere. No one believed that it was possible to bring this storefront back to its original luster, but we did, we did it. Repair and restoration was the primary treatment, including the filling and patching of holes, which is possible with aluminum, replacing only if some area was irreparable, and we really stuck to this. Luckily, this type of aluminum storefront framing is still manufactured and readily available pretty much in matching dimension and profile. And the effort and expense at repair and restoration here over replacement, it's not always possible, as I think I've properly demonstrated already, but because the Secretary of the Interior's standards really does recognize economic feasibility, but, so we couldn't restore and save everything, but what we did address was restore to the highest level possible. So I think critical is identifying the most important character-defining features, spaces, and materials, and then giving it that highest level effort. Similarly, the facade courtyard here, storefront, was quite damaged, and this exterior awning here is all steel with aluminum storefront windows, doors and transoms. And here's the gleaming view from the interior after we restored it. The original full-height windows behind those triangular concrete facade baffles there, they had been filled with a white tile very early in the first years of the Covina Bowl. And we brought back the original design of Powers Daily and DeRosa here, opening up this space quite dramatically. And you can also see from these photos, the concrete walls and baffles and the stucco soffits were filled, the small cracks and spalls there were all filled and patched. And after stripping away the addition on the north end, that was quite a mess. The original colorful walls there that you see in the bottom left, those were repaired, restored, and the missing soffit was rebuilt. So the enormous A-frame roof was also addressed quite comprehensively. The gunite coating, that's a gunite material there on the roof, was thoroughly checked for cracks and patched as needed. The roof decking had been replaced several times, and each layer climbed higher and higher up the sloping sides of the A-frame. So it was quite improperly done, improperly done by the time we got it, and quite a source of water intrusion over the cave ceiling. So through the project, though, that roof deck was completely redone, and the interface there at the A-frame roof was properly finished again. So when we uncovered the clear story windows here on the storefront, really, this would have read more like a curtain wall in its original design, but is quite reading as a clear story now. I was relieved to see for myself the framing and the glass was mostly intact. And that is me on the boom lift there, you just can't hardly tell because I'm so up high in the air, but I was up there, I had to be quite involved with every aspect. And this was a very complex area, and it really required a creative approach that took all of the expertise of the professionals on the design team to address the unique weatherproofing conditions here in the A-frame where the windows and the folded plate canopy and the Mayan wall meet. The Mayan wall was an addition there, so the roofing of the Mayan wall was creating quite a problem here, but we did overcome those issues. And given the grand work, grand size, excuse me, of the Covina Bowl, detail work was really no small task. The bouquet cannon rock walls here were just coated in environmental debris, graffiti, and I personally completed multiple product and methods testing here. Ultimately, we used the gentlest means possible per the Secretary of the Interior's standards, and the natural rock was cleaned and graffiti coated, actually, to protect it from further abuse in the future. And we were able to accomplish that without compromising the aesthetic appearance or the natural rock. So the many tall, mature, original palm trees, the unique, amazing boulders onsite in the path of development, we didn't ignore those, and those were relocated onsite, they were not lost. The tree relocation project was a big win, and that can be credited to the original project manager who was on the site, because she was quite determined to save them all. And in defense of historic trees, we did find that relocating the historic trees was no more expensive than purchasing and installing new palms. Both the original plans and historic photographs showed us that the stylized boomerang sea that you see in the center photograph, well, that was a change. That's the sign that we inherited, and that was a change in the 1960s. And in consultation with the local preservation community, the project was, we not only repaired and restored the neon sign, we returned the original Covina script. And we also took the opportunity to replace that added address light box there. You know, that was a good addition in terms of having the address there and prominent, especially for emergency personnel and stuff, but it was not a period-appropriate design. And so, we took the opportunity to fix that. And so, we replicated the original, oh, it's hard to see in the picture on the top left, but we replicated the original font that was used in marketing materials for the 1060 address, and we restored that Covina script. The left side is a picture at night, but the sign is not lighted yet because we're waiting for switchgear with material shortages, we haven't gotten that yet. But you can see in the bottom right photo that W, when we took the neon off the sign and it was back in the shop, we could light the neon and see that it was a pink neon outlined in blue. And so, that is what will be put back very soon here when the switchgear gets in. So this is a glimpse of the depth of the study and the effort that does go into getting some of these design selections just right. In the upper-left photo, that's architect Ron Nestor with WHA, and he's walking the larger team through the boards that displayed the many historic images and color references that we gathered and used to prepare the Covina Bowl project color palette in the WHA Design and Color Lab there. And the top-right photo is me, captures the moment that I discovered that one of our modern paint color selections was just right. It matched perfectly with a paint strip that we unexpectedly discovered when we revealed it in taking away that north addition. As for architectural and material salvage for interpretive display, well, that was a very important aspect of the project as well, and it's actually in various stages of completion right now as we speak. I'm designing and managing several aspects of that, and they include interpretive panels, tiki lights, bowling ball landscape features, the green Torso concourse, a bronze plaque as well, I've written a bronze plaque, and that's going to be set atop a restored section of that mosaic tile bulkhead. So here's just a bit more story on the green Torso concourse. So this concourse separated, it ran north-south, and it separated the front mass of the building with all the other amenities from the bowling lanes on the west, and that mosaic tile concourse bulkhead, excuse me, there ran along the concourse, separating, and you would step down into the bowling lanes. So one thing that we did, we were cutting the building off pretty much right here, and so we were able to use existing interior walls, because they were concrete, as exterior walls. And this green Torso concourse was in the path of demolition, and it was such an important feature and bisecting the space and the uses here. And so, we came up with a plan to harvest it. We cut it out like birthday cake, as you can see in the top-right picture, along the zinc divider strip lines, and sliced that and lifted it right out. And it's currently being, well, they're flipping it over like a pancake and putting a concrete backing on it and making it into Torso pavers right now as we speak, and that's going to be reinstalled in a sub-slab, basically like a subgrade sidewalk, and it will be reinstalled as Torso pavers in the very exact same location. We couldn't retain the entire width of that, but we have quite a lot of it. So it will again be a linear concourse just on the outside of the building now. These are the tiki lights. We did inherit three original tiki lights, they were in the landscape, and unfortunately, the tops were missing completely. So this is a restoration and a reconstruction effort. And the right shows the final approved mockup. That picks up the original orange or coral color that was used in the original color palette, and they are soon to be placed, probably next week, in the landscape by the entry. So I was trying to mask some of the accomplishments as I went, so I could give you a bit of a big reveal, so let's start where we began. So here's that west elevation where the north awning was, and I showed you a little bit of that, but here's what we were able to accomplish. So this part of this used to be that interior wall, as I said, and then we infilled parts of wall that would have been missing as where people walked through. And the Purple Sea Channel is still there, it's not purple anymore, but it remains embedded in the rock wall as a historic placeholder of its original position. And these are the triangular baffles on the facade, infilled with that white tile I mentioned, and here's what we were able to accomplish, there we go, by returning to the original design by Powers Daily and DeRosa. Really opened up this space in a dramatic way and made those baffles stand out as they should. Here's the facade courtyard, it's just behind a rock wall, so when you're standing out in the, on the street looking at the Covina Bowl, you really can't see this until you tuck behind it. And here's what we were able to accomplish. And here's what we were able to accomplish here. Beautiful. Okay, and then the facade, if you remember this picture, this was day one, I mentioned. And here's what it looks like now. Quite a big improvement, a great return to its original look. And finally, this is a bit more close up of the A-frame, the folded plate canopy in the entry as we inherited it. And here's what we were able to accomplish here. It's really quite a stunning reveal, I hope. So finally, we were able to celebrate. So don't forget that the construction of 132 residential units was happening all at the very same time as we were restoring the Covina Bowl. And this is really what made the restoration of the Covina Bowl even possible. Combining historic preservation with new development is not easy or without frustration and it does take people with vision to see the potential. And I do want to point out, I'm so glad that the previous presentation really did the same, that every project, every single project, every property has an owner or a group, an organization, a community that cares about it. And partnering with a robustly engaged community is what makes award-winning projects. I did make a connection early on with the community and I actually continued to connect with the community during construction. I had a lot of visitors and I gave a lot of tours and I was happy to do so. And we are still quite connected now as we see the Covina Bowl through the landmarking process. So the project is now celebrated for its level of presentation, preservation and reuse that brought new life to a very, very treasured icon. And a recent write-up in the LA, on the LA Conservancy website acknowledges something very important that was learned here. So I'll quote that, "Win-win outcomes often come in all shapes and sizes and sometimes involve partial preservation approaches," end quote. The LA Conservancy has stamped this endangered historic property saved. And last night, literally last night, the City of Covina Planning Commission adopted a resolution to recommend approval of a designation application to name the Covina Bowl a local city landmark. We're quite happy and proud of that accomplishment. Thank you for your attention to the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. That was fantastic. And speaking about the preservation community, it was fun to see Chris Nichols at your happy dance. He was one of our big supporters for La Laguna. Do my fellow commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Orina or comments?
No questions. I just applaud the effort that was, you know, used for all of this. Looking at the presentation, I was having brief moments of memories of 30 years ago. I grew up in Downey, but the first time I got my car that following day going to school, my friends convinced me to ditch school, drive to this bowling alley. And yeah, so I'm having these brief moments. So I really applaud the efforts of, you know, the communities to preserve something like this for people like, you know, to drive by it and know that it's still there and have those memories, you know, instead of just seeing an empty parking lot. But no, thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Weeks?
Just a great presentation, the depth that you got into with the demolition and the history, it's just incredible. And I also have memories of bowling there and performing there back. My parents still live in West Covina when that was a hangout and just an icon. And to have it preserved to that effect and bring in much-needed housing, it's just a win-win. So congratulations to the team for pulling that off. Very nice.
I would just have a couple of questions for you, but just in the accolades of the project. I think it's really helpful for us to see sort of the, for lack of a better analogy, how you make the sausage of preservation because it really, you often do really have to take things apart in order to bring them back. And it is, it's hard to see sort of the levels of demolition that are involved and the scale of work. And I think a couple of my questions really are sort of in the beginning pieces of that. In the City of Covina, what protections existed, whether it was in city ordinances, that allowed the building to survive in such a state of disrepair and not become a complete loss? Was it just a group who advocated for it until, like your quote said, the right developer came along?
Partly yes. The Friends of Covina Bowl and, you know, the LA Conservancy were quite involved and active and partnering with the city. The city was also really on the ball, knowing what a gem they have here. And so like I said, the demolition projects that were brought forward were just, weren't going to work. And they did have the city behind them, these local, the local group here, to support that, you know, they weren't going to accept something less than what was possible here. So I'm sure, I don't think anybody really foresaw the full possibilities here because this is, you know, such a great outcome that, you know, I think it was hard to imagine with what we inherited. But one thing I can tell you that the city did, this definitely had, you know, community watches, fire watches. We did have the fire department's eyes on this. We actually had to do, the developer had to implement a fire watch, a 24-hour fire watch when we realized that the alterations on the inside with the stripping of the copper and the taking of some of the appliances and the units that were in here caused the fire suppression system to be not functional. And so in the event of a fire, the fire sprinklers would not have gone off. And when that was realized, the city did impose a fire watch and, which of course we complied with and nobody wanted this to burn down. And so we were able to get the fire sprinkler system in working order in a short time, thank goodness, to continue to protect the building. And the city tried as much as they could to protect it, the, you know, the former owner, you know, they had it boarded up, but it was just, there were so many entry points to this building that it was very difficult. And a lot of hiding spots, you know, once you were on the inside, it was so large and vast, so.
And then my second question sort of dovetails on that in terms of the easier to rebuild, easier to rebuild. How does that argument go to switch them from reuse? And again, is it because there are protections in Sydney, in the city ordinance, because this is all being done prior to any kind of designation?
Yes, it's true. This is all done prior to the local designation, but the national register determination was in place. It was actually not listed over owner objection at the time. So it was formally determined eligible by the keeper of the National Register, though. And also, it is listed in the California Register because the California Register has no such restrictions. So that was its sort of status at the time that we completed the project. And now it's well on its way to becoming a local landmark. With planning commission approval last night, it'll go forward to city council. But really, the project relied heavily on the cultural resources study that I did and my Secretary of the Interior's analysis. And it is, you know, when you're looking at that, like I said, it is about, I think, identifying the most important character-defining features, materials and spaces. And so technical and economic feasibility is something that the standards do recognize. And you do have to make choices. So in one case, retain, repair, restore is the approach. And in another case, it's replacement. And when it's replacement, you know, then we also have a hierarchy of approaches to that with replacement in kind, number one. And next would be replacement with period compatibility. So it was a matter of what came out of the analysis and using that approach to get there. And I do think in this case, I want to say that I think, you know, the developer, any developer with such a vast project and all that we were achieving could have, could have had a strong position in arguing against keeping that north awning. And so we had a, we had a developer that really trusted in the process and valued historic preservation and worked with the community and the community was really, you know, found that feature quite interesting. And I think that made the difference in working harder to make it happen.
And then I had a question for you about the housing units that were added and what types of discussions around sort of the infill piece of this, the massing and scale. Just because the facade of the bowl is really meant to be so sweeping and such a standout piece, how do you do that without drowning it?
Yes, that is a challenge. And the site orientation and the site layout here was a big part of the analysis for me in assessing whether the new construction and all that, you know, that includes like the massing, the setback, the distance, et cetera, whether that presents a significant impact under CEQA. And one thing I noticed in doing the research, I almost never saw a photograph of the Covina Bowl from the south. It was always from the north or the northeast. And so that would have been the intersection with the main highway, which is, of course, is, could be expected with roadside commercial architecture, you know, because this was the main vantage point, the main vista. And so the setback and the corner orientation and the corner parking lot even came into play with the analysis. And that was one thing I stressed is that, you know, and I was able to help shape the conceptual design because I was brought in so early, which is, which was fantastic. I said, the parking lot being in the front and a corner L shape is quite important to the entire site layout. And so we were able to retain that. And so that made allowing for a bit of a closer construction. And actually, you can see that the apartments there on the south are a little forward, but it made it more acceptable, you know, when we realized that really the other side, where all the character-defining features are and where we would see the Covina Bowl from that corner, was far more important. So again, it was about sort of assessing what was most important or less important areas and focusing our attentions where it made the most impact, so. Yeah, and then of course, like I said, compatibility without competition is the goal, you know, was the goal here. Now, there's a lot of, this could be a long answer, I'm sorry, but there's a lot of approaches to attaining compatibility or approaching this. And we went with, you know, this compatibility where we were inspired and we reimagined the features and materials that we found in the Covina Bowl. And I think that's quite often one of the most successful ways to approach compatibility. And so, you know, we wanted to introduce rock, we wanted to introduce angles, but we didn't want to do it in such an overwhelming way that the new construction became more prominent, you know, especially since it did have a forward setting there on the south and a quite high roof line. So I was able to help, you know, in that conversation and influence a bit of those decisions. And then throughout the site, we used lighting, signage, landscaping, you know, to build cohesion.
Wonderful. And again, congratulations. I don't know what the genesis of this case study presentation was, but it was ever idea. It's really wonderful because it's really nice. You can talk about Secretary of the Interior Standards and you can talk about what that means, but to see how it plays out in practice, I think is a really instructive way for us to understand what our role is. So thank you. If there aren't any further comments, it is now time for public comment. Do we have any on this item?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any public comments for this item.
All right, so it is now eight o'clock and the time for public comment on this item is closed. And that will take us to item six, Certified Local Government Application Update and the Proposed Zone Text Amendment for Cleanup Items to be Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Ordinance. It looks like it's back to you.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. A brief update for us here, since we last talked in September at the last meeting, I was able to complete my review of the remaining sections of the ordinance. So that was quite good progress there and have those comments written. And I have provided staff, Sam, with the comments on the first half, which have been fully reviewed by me and developed in consultation with the Office of Historic Preservation and reviewed by the Office of Historic Preservation. So those are in staff's hands and have, I believe, been reviewed. Perhaps Sam would like to maybe provide any update on that status. And then for the balance of it, though, I am coordinating with the Office of Historic Preservation to review my comments and will be working out final comments for staff soon in the new quarter of the new year.
Yes, what staff would like to add is staff definitely appreciates all the time and effort that Jen has been putting into the conversations and reviewing all the sections in the ordinance that is catching the eyes of the National Parks Services Department at this time and just helping to navigate through that ahead of receiving comments and so that the city can be a little bit more proactive as to what may be giving concern to the department for approving the application. And so the effort that Jen has put into the conversations, both with the California State Office as well as with the National Office, has been very productive. Staff has reviewed some of the proposed updates and what we are looking at at this time would be to, in the meantime, what we have been doing is actually putting together a comprehensive redline, which potentially we would like to share with both the state and the federal office. And maybe they would consider taking a look at that, kind of giving staff in the city their early sentiments on the proposed amendments and hopefully that is something that we can bring back to the Preservation Commission as well as to the city council. So that is high on the list for staff, but absolutely. I mean, without Jen's help, I'd work two years into the application as it is and we're heading into our third one. So it is, it's an interesting timeline even from planning's perspective.
I was going to say that as I was running out of my office today, I was thinking to myself, I think it was three years ago, I was running into my office trying to get pieces of this application together. So it has been a marathon slog and thank you very much for the work. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Commissioner Orina?
No, no questions or comments.
All right, Commissioner Weeks? All right, in that case, have we had any public comments on this item?
No, Madam Chair, we have no public comments for this item.
All right, so it is now 8:03 and the time for public comment on this item is closed, which will take us on to staff items.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, this being the last Preservation Commission meeting for 2022, staff would like to thank the commission for volunteering your time and just providing the insight and the expertise and always educating the planning staff on the topic of preservation. This past year has been primarily focused on the city's historic resource survey project and also on progressing the CLG application, again, with the state and federal office. The commission also received a presentation, again, from Jen on the Secretary of Interior Standard for the Treatment of Historic Properties. And also, the Preservation Commission assisted with reviewing the guidelines for the street naming policy, which will be taken to the city council in the upcoming months. Also, ARG in the City of San Gabriel received an award from the Los Angeles Conservancy on the city's historic context statement, which was completed last year. So absolutely great work from ARG. And at this time, according to the LA Conservancy report card, the City of San Gabriel currently has a B grade. And where that grade comes from would be elements of a strong preservation program, including adopting a preservation ordinance, appointing a dedicated preservation commission, adopting a process for designated historic districts and landmarks, completing a survey of historic resources, implementing a milzac program, obtaining CLG status and adopting a historic preservation element. So hopefully, the city staff may lean on Jen's assistance with this, but hopefully the efforts and attention that has been given to the program would maybe help to assist to elevate that grade a little bit so that the city can be on equal standings with the neighboring cities such as South Pasadena and Pasadena as well. So that's one of the goals in the upcoming year. And also, in the upcoming year, the survey project will continue to be a priority until completion as well as getting that approval on the CLG application. And also this evening, the La Laguna presentation and the presentation of the Covina Bowl is the beginning of what staff would like to bring forth to the commission, just really presentations to feature and highlight historic resources, buildings, landscape structures in San Gabriel, again, to just kind of remind the community, both the city and regionally, of just what not to forget. And also, with the completion of the Resources Survey and the conclusions and recommendations provided in that survey, the staff hopes will help to inform and to guide the next steps to the city's preservation efforts. And so this concludes the updates from staff for the remainder of the year. Staff wish the commission happy holidays, and we'll see everybody in the new year.
I think I can speak for everyone in saying we wish you all a very happy holiday too. And appropriately, since it's finals week and we're looking to raise our grade from a B, I think we're well on our way. We've got a lot of things in the hopper, so I'm looking forward to a good year to come. If there aren't any questions for Sam, we'll go on to the eighth item on our agenda, Commissioner Comments and Conference Meeting Reports. Each commissioner may address the commission on matters of general information and/or concern. This is also the time for commissioners to report on conferences and/or meetings that they have attended. So Commissioner Orenya, anything?
No, no conferences or meetings, other than I went to the Preservation Awards event. It was fantastic. Gave me an opportunity to put on a suit, which I don't normally do on a regular basis, but just being exposed to what other organizations and cities and, you know, committees are doing throughout Los Angeles to, you know, keep things, you know, preserved and just beautify the community. All things considered, and most of us have been stuck at, you know, at home for the last couple of years, I appreciated the invite and I thank everyone for the opportunity.
Wonderful. Commissioner Weeks?
For my report, I would just encourage my fellow commissioners to keep watching the California Preservation Foundation's activities. They have all sorts of really wonderful free programming, along with really great webinars. They will provide a wealth of information and instruction. The Land Acknowledgement Statement Task Force has not met since our last meeting, but I hope that in the new year, we can bring back a report about the progress on the city's land acknowledgement statement. So that is my report. And I believe with that, it brings us to item nine, adjourn the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission meeting. Do I need a motion for that?
No, but staff would like to add that the regular meeting is indicated as March 15th, but considering the timeline for the survey project, there may be a meeting sooner than that, but the dates indicate the regular meeting.
Wonderful. Well, then with that, at 8:09, I will adjourn the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Meeting to the regular meeting of the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission on March 15th, 2023, at 6:30 PM here at City Hall, but also streaming.